All right, we have a work session tonight with the Library Board of Trustees regarding construction renovation of a new library. So I'm going to call the work session to order. First of all, I apologize, we were a little bit late. We had to perform interviews of two of our judges before this, which we're going to decide a little bit for. So, the work session is a little different than a traditional meeting, but I just wanted to run through that with everybody at our work session. We kind of work through the issues. Sometimes we have it with another entity in town, like the Board of Trustees, or with the school committee. Sometimes we have it on a particular issue. There's no voting at a work session. It's really to work through what the issues are. Some of you I know have attended work sessions in the past. There's no formal period of public comment either during a work session. We did, because of the interest in this, this is being televised, so, but it is not being televised live, so it'll be seen on video afterwards. And I'll have Terry, the dates that can be broadcast will make sure we get out to people in town. So, I called for this work session because I felt we were kind of at an impasse on the library issue, so I wanted to see what the Board of Trustees, in light of all the events that have taken place in the last couple of years, and in light of also the council, what the thought processes were of coming to a way to kind of resolve that impasse. So, right now, I'm going to really open it up to the members of the, to the Board of Trustees and to the council. So I'll first go to Lori, and she wants to talk about this.
My last point, due to the work sessions, is usually a question and answer, the answer to a problem.
I hear you.
I said, usually, work sessions that I have attended, that there's a question and an answer, a period of public... Is that going to transpire to me?
It's a good one. So let's get through this portion first, because again, the work session is about if we can come to some kind of agreement. So, and we do know we've had a bunch of work sessions, and we often have public comments together. So, what I'm going to do is turn it over to Lori Kelly, who's the head of the Board of Trustees for the library, and thank you, the Board of Trustees, for being here.
Sure.
Go ahead. Yes. Matt Mannix. And I'm also going to encourage everybody to speak into the microphone, since it is being televised.
Richard Lima.
Terrence Shadshuttlewood.
Nancy Penn.
Patty O'Brady, library director.
Lori Kelly.
Daniel Shields.
Jim Manny, town manager.
So, tonight, the library has prepared a short, completely short overview of the work that's been done so far, and what we see is our, you know, our need to really step it up and move forward right now in recent months. So, not to be tedious, but because this is not on for so long, and a lot of questions could be getting asked, we just thought we'd do a short overview. So, the library board started this, and was a previous library board, some of us are still around. We have a lack of physical space and ADA compliance in our current building. So in 2008, we actually hired a architecture firm from Wakefield Columbia Architects to talk about raising the second floor. It was phenomenally expensive, just to get three, four thousand square feet for a programming room. It was up around four million dollars. So at that point, the board thought, we already know that we're on our way to having a new library. We started meeting with OLS, because they have a very generous grant and aid program that reimburses library projects. We went to the council at that point to ask for a bond, and we were given fifty thousand dollars in capital improvements to pursue studies for the new library. In 2011, we hired a library consultant. She wrote a needs assessment report. Library consultant's an expert in library construction and library use. So she looked at all of the Marigansett documentation, comprehensive plan, demographics, census stuff, to come up with what we need in this particular town. Again, 2013, we continued to search the entire town, top to bottom, for suitable library sites. And in 2014, we actually asked the council again for a bond for the library project. The council went forward with the football field and the police bonds, and told us to come back in the next cycle, which would be 2016. So, 2015, we had a workshop, very much like this one, where we went over a whole bunch of library sites. We vetted, I think, close to ten sites in town, but we only really ran serious numbers on four sites. At the end of the public workshop, this was September, October 2015, the council chose to stay up here, and they said, you know, continue to work on the Belmont, and examine our current site for an addition that would give us the space, but they were very adamant, don't close, because one of the options would be to build a whole new building on that site. In 2016, we did get the five point eight million dollar approved for the bond. And then in 2017, we had the first of two commercial traisels for the deal in the Belmont building, as negotiations continued. The town council did reject that first deal, which was a condominium deal. We worked out a better deal, which is the current deal that we have purchased in the building, and there was a second, and also a traisel in January 2018, which was the two point six seven six. So, we're all caught up now. We bought the building in October of last year for two point eight. So now, we're going to move on to funding. Again, you know, all of this is just very rudimentary, but we did approve five point eight million in bonds, and the state program, which is grant and aid, under OLS, reimburses up to fifty percent of the project. So we've always looked at a conservative figure. If it's a five point eight million dollar bond, and we get forty percent, that would be two point three million. And that's a flow proof from the state to the town. So the town issues five point eight million, but we're really only paying back the three point five that the state is not covering. That covers the, for nineteen years, that covers the interest on the bonds, it covers the cost of issuing the forty percent of the bonds. And several, I know Lori Penny, also Jim Manny, previously on other presentations, have said, that three point five is basically eight cents on the dollar, and the cost of the taxpayer on an average four hundred thousand dollar house would be about thirty-three dollars a year, in real terms. So these are numbers that have been presented before. If three point five is still a lot for the town to do, we want to remind the town that when we leave our current building, that building would be sold. It is a corner lot with parking. I know people have really been clamoring for a smaller grocery in the area, but that is an asset for the town. The town doesn't, and that has nothing to do with us, we don't have to sell it. But again, that asset is not created of, our commercial appraisal said one point three million for our current building, so again, we're just being conservative of creating a one million dollar asset. Now, we're going on to fundraising. Again, we have Dan Barry, our fundraiser, here tonight, so I'm just going to do just a quick movement over that, and then I'm sure you'll have more specific questions for him. There's two types of fundraising that we are pursuing, and that is, one is foundations and grants. We have been told that there are certain things that the foundations need to see. That is an architectural floor plan. We do not have that, because we don't have an architect yet. And they need to see the commitment that this project is going forward, which, again, we're kind of stalemate it here, they don't see that. And there are, some of these big foundation grant places have specific timelines. There's one coming up in April. If we cannot get an architectural plan and file it in April, we wait for another year. And these are six-figure possible grants that, you know, love libraries, like the project, but we cannot afford to miss that deadline. On the private side, you know, private donations from people who live in town, they also wish to see floor plans, they also wish to see a commitment that it's going forward, and there are naming opportunities for various, you know, clock towers, or rooms, or elevators. So we do, we do need to move forward on that front as well. The next one slide is really on our timing, because I know there's some resistance, we just bought the building, we have to have a lot of meetings, get a lot of information, which of course, we applaud before, but we're really running up against a time problem now. So, if we issue the RFP tonight, it's easily four to six weeks before we can review the responses and actually award a winning bid, and that, at that point, we will have an architect. So if it goes out January twenty-second, we're looking somewhere around March fifth. The architect has ninety days for the preliminary plan, and I have to caution you, that's the first plan, because the architect is going to have to have design charrettes, which are a lot of information from the staff, the pavement, and the way that the library functions in Marigansett. We have a very highly educated population, they use the library in ways that are different from the way they use the library in Warwick, or Cranston. So this is a lot of back and forth from the preliminary design, which we estimate could be another ninety days. We, when we all agree on that input, that final plan, then we need to get a cost estimation from a professional cost estimator. OLS insists on that, obviously, we want to know what it's going to cost, whether we're within budget or not, and that's another two to four weeks. So now, we're looking at September fifteenth. We take our architectural plan, we take our cost estimate, we take our needs assessment, which Patience Jackson, our library consultant, you know, drew up in 2016, and we give all that information to the state, and they take sixty to ninety days to comment on our plan, to give us advice in case we put the bathrooms in a place that's not appropriate, something like that, and then give us a hard number as to what they're willing to reimburse. But that's the timeframe. Now you can see we're into December. So, the other thing to mention is, you know, the bond issuance, we want, we have a proposal for five point eight million. The way that the building was purchased was, they took two point eight million, I'm sorry, two point eight out of the reserves, hoping to issue the bonds to repay back the town reserves. So, again, the top, the clock for issuing that bond started when we purchased the building in October, so we really must issue that two point eight million by January twenty-twenty, because the bond council needs to market and sell the bonds as well, or we cannot use those bonds to purchase the two point eight, or to repay the two point eight million into the town's coffers, which would seem to be a tax burden on the town, like, you know, we're really not thinking about it. The other thing to remember is, the bond council will not issue any of the bonds without a fully funded project. How do we know the project is fully funded? We have to have an architect, and we have to have a professional cost estimate. So, since 2016, interest rates have risen, construction costs have risen, tariffs have doubled on some of the material costs, everything has gotten worse for us. The current library is open under waivers, we have bought waivers with the state of Rhode Island for three years. That means we're not meeting the standards set by the state. And again, OLS will work with us and give us waivers if they see we're moving forward on our project. The most dire thing that could happen is, the library could be closed. And let's be clear, if the library was closed because of failure to meet standards, or to make any progress on that, then that means the people in Marigansett cannot use any library in the state, because the state mandates each town support the library, and they have certain standards. They have standards, but they also give us money to meet those standards. So, it's not really bad, just like. Now, we just had a quick overview, the ten top reasons that we feel we should go forward. Our current building is inefficient to keep maintaining. We use extra staff because of so many blind spots in the building. The second floor has no legal access. We have inadequate parking of fifteen spots, a very small programming room, the children's small room is too small, fifteen children, or fifteen people, so adults and children, can only be in the children's room at one time, and there's no bathrooms, which makes it fairly unsafe. No legal fire exits from the meeting rooms, multiple ADA violations. The number two reason, the state of Rhode Island will reimburse up to fifty percent of any program, and the number one reason that we feel we should move forward with this, is that sixty-seven percent of Marigansett voted for this project. And just one small last thought, is that Marigansett is one of, which I'm not sure it's three towns, but one of very few towns that have never claimed our share of the state grant aid. And what that means, as a Marigansett taxpayer, which I am, I built the library in Tiverton, and I built the library in Barrington, and Cranston, those my tax dollars were used to build beautiful libraries everywhere in the state. Thank you.
So, thank you Lori, I know some people have been, were familiar with some parts of that, and not all of it. I wanted to then see other council members, and other members of the Board of Trustees, what their thought process was, you know, it's Patrick and Jill, I know I've been living with them longer, so I was going to maybe go to them first, and then, and go up from there, so. You both have, the three of us have been in meetings the last few years, so.
Maybe a good time for Dan to step in and explain the fundraising expertise that's going to raise.
And we're operating at our budget, and Jim, if you could grab me a more, seven million dollar total number for this, is that correct?
Yes, seven point two million.
Seven point two million dollars for the budget of this year, that's the number we're operating off right now.
We're going under that assumption, as the best estimate we could get at this time. Thank you, for the, to the town council and the board for moving this forward. My role has been to look at the community for fundraising source, and also foundations and corporations. One thing that I was asked to do a long time ago, and thought it would be good for the public to know, is the clients that I've been involved in South County, and the latest library that I was involved in. Tiverton Library was my project, we raised three point five million, a two point five million dollar goal. The other statements that we have here is, everything has reached goal, that's the point I want to share, is that I've had experience for over forty-five years in the fundraising field. We're going to be successful. Three key components to this, that is important for the council and the Board of Directors to know. All fundraised will be for the gap need, meaning, whatever the architect finds out how much more it's going to be than the five point eight, we do not want the town to be responsible for that. We want to take care of that obligation, and we're going to do that by fundraising. And so, we're looking at gap needs, but we need to know what that number might be. One very important thing to realize is that donors will not look at giving their money to pay down the bond. They're taxpayers, they know they've already done the tax portion, they're doing something over and above what they already have voted on and supported. So, people will not be giving money to reuse the bond, and if we go in that direction, most likely, folks will want their money back. The public fundraising goal we raised, I used a, based on a good interview that Matt had last week, on Channel twelve, I think it was. The minimum was one point three million, that he thought we might need, so that's what I used in this context. So we're looking at to raise one point two, one point three million to make it happen. Already, we received some funds, we haven't been able to get commitments from a lot of folks, I've talked to a lot of individuals, but people are waiting to see what movement we have, how we're going forward. Folks are energized to support the library. I have four gifts to report, though. We have one, a non-distarter group, has pledged five hundred thousand dollars to this one point three million dollar. We have one family gift of fifty thousand dollars, another family gift of twenty-four thousand, and a corporate gift of forty thousand. These are the only four people I've spoken to to make a definitive decision about their giving. Many others are being recruited for our honorary leadership committee. Our chair for the campaign is Jim and Jennifer Bennett. Our honorary chair is Terri Murray, and we have a group of ten other families that are on board, and we've got another eight that are retired, and we're hopeful to get them on board within three to four weeks. Problem is, they're down in Florida, and the Board of Directors doesn't want to send me down there, which I don't understand. But we're making fantastic fundraising progress at this early stage, and we really couldn't get commitments until the assignment, which was in October. So, from the fundraising side, we're going to raise one point three and much more. Any questions? Initially, the first step that I had, and every fundraiser the country does, is a feasibility study on whether or not the town cares about the program. Fundraising is an easy business, finding out who cares about the project. In this case, the town cared about the project, and I found that there was one point two to one point seven million dollars, we could set as a goal to make it happen. And already, we're at forty-seven percent.
I have a question, Dan. How was the process, in terms of the referendum passing in Marigansett? How was that process compared to Tiverton? Was that an easier process in that sense, if we had a group of volunteers?
In Tiverton, they did it a different way, where they raised the money first, and used that as the incentive that the town should come on board and support the bond. What we did was, we went out and asked the community to support the bond. In both cases, in Tiverton and here, the towns committed and supported the bond. We supported it with a higher percentage than Tiverton, because Tiverton was in the high fifties, but they still came through, and they raised three point five. We're going to be fine at raising one point two to one point seven, for sure.
All right, thank you. And yes, make sure everybody speaks into the microphones, I know this is a different format for us, I know that Dan did, but yes, thank you. We want to make sure everyone speaks into the microphone, we all have our own. So Patrick, Patrick and Jill, I was just going to see what you both have seen, your work experience.
Yes, I have a little presentation I would like to go over, it's something we discussed last year, you know, it's the same numbers.
From Josh, Patrick.
That one, yeah. Going out and pointing at it. Okay, well, that's us. Move on to the next slide. Okay, the total cost of this whole project, these numbers have been out there for over a year, ten point five, reimbursement, three point three, that's from all this fundraising, minimum of four point two in this slide. Adjusted cost, over twenty-year cost, is seven point two million. Next slide. As a breakdown of the home owners, again, we know these numbers, and they haven't changed, even though we did update the scoring through the engineering department two weeks ago, these numbers are still up. So that's seven point two, cost over twenty years. Yearly cost, average home, four hundred and eight thousand, plus six hundred and sixty dollars a year, or over twenty years, one point three dollars a year, eight cents per thousand, I don't know seven. So whatever your current town assessment is, times eight cents, that's what you're on the hook for, for that year. Next. Okay, we have authorized bond, two thousand sixteen election fundraising, fundraising, I go back and forth, one point one, I mean, one point two, one point four. Total funding is about seven million, so, next slide. Okay, now, this is important, we may, I put this little one together here, that we may defund the bond, instead of, well, the stacks, all the way to the left there, so five point eight million. Now, on the top, the green is our standard, one point two, one point four, that the town is on the hook for fundraising. Now, if we get four million, which is the second touch on the left, we still have the one point four we need to raise, and we have to raise an additional one point eight, and so forth to the, if you move to the right, if we get a three million of that bond, plus a little one point four, we'd have to raise yet another two million. So as you can see, defunding, or lack of funding for that complete, five point eight, puts us in a difficult position. Thank you. Okay, this is a rudimentary makeup of a library. We're basically got eighteen thousand five hundred square feet. Total cost is seven point two million. If you look at the number all the way to the right, you've got four million on the top, we defund the bond, and we, and we only get four million of that bond money. That will only go towards fifty-five percent of the build-out and the purchase, because remember, this is the purchase and the building that's paying, that bond money's paying for. So again, three million, we're only be able to build out forty-two percent of that bonus, and then two million, again, would be around twenty-eight percent or so. We'd, we may have to open up the takeout window at that point. Next. The liquor store. I do this in here, all the scoring over the last year, didn't include the liquor store, I'm not including the liquor store. We have that lease currently sixty thousand in case, so we can't cover, can, is being paid by the liquor store, and that's, next place. This is another thing that people keep asking, ah, is the library in a flood zone? Okay, now, do this in here, because I did, and several people asked me this week, why would we build a library in a flood zone? Okay, as you can see, the yardage area, there's Zone X, which is at which, Zone X is the least of our flood zones. I mean, it's also known as the five-hundred-year flood zone. Every year, you have a point-two percent chance of a flood. But if anybody has been around, you know, you know that a whole pair, Urban Bureau Project, drawed and filled, and raised the elevation of that whole area, I think it was like twelve to fifteen, twelve to sixteen feet. So, certainly, the town, safety buildings in the flood zone, but we're actually out of flood zone. That circle around there, that gray area, that's actually a fourteen-foot, eighty, fourteen-foot flood zone, so. So this is, dispel that rumor, we're surrounded, but we're on that hill. Now, for me, I think this is an opportunity to move the pair forward. I'm not including the liquor store. We have that lease currently, $60,000 in pace, so we can't cover, can, is being paid by the liquor store, and that's, next place. This is another thing that people keep asking, ah, is the library in a flood zone? Okay, now, do this in here, because I did, and several people asked me this week, why would we build a library in a flood zone? Okay, as you can see, the orange area, there's Zone X, which at which, Zone X is the least of our flood zones. I mean, it's also known as a 500-year flood zone. Every year, you have a 0.2% chance of a flood. But if anybody has been around, you know that the whole pair, Urban Bureau Project, draw and fill, and raise the elevation of that whole area, I think it was like 12 to 15, 12 to 16 feet. So certainly, the town, safety buildings in the flood zone, we're actually out of flood zone. That circle around there, that gray area, that's actually a 14-foot, 80, 14-foot flood zone. So this is, dispel that rumor, we're surrounded, but we're on that hill. Now, for me, I think this is an opportunity to move the pair forward. I think we can take the old pair, I've reached out to several local businesses, and they have interest in leasing the old library. I believe we can carve it up into 3,000 square foot units, for a total of 9,000 square feet. Currently, market demand is 20,000 per square foot, and that's very generous, and that would gross about 180 a year. And you take out some maintenance and basic principles of management, I think we could net about 125 and 135 per year, and that can go to offset the new purchases and build-out of the bond. Uh, done. That's about it. Thank you.
I know that council members have also spent some time talking to the bond council on Olis, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jill now, in terms of, since she, that's essentially Patrick, and working on this and dealing with this project the last two years. So Jill.
Okay, thank you very much, and also thank you to Carolyn, Karen Miller, who is, when we hear Olis, she is actually the person that we met with, so thank you for taking the time to come to Cholberg Gallery there again.
We can't hear her.
With the microphone's on, I'll just have to yell a little louder. Let's talk louder. Can you hear me now?
Not really.
Nope.
Take another mic.
Take another mic. Good. Oh. That's okay.
Oh, that's good.
So we did take the opportunity, as mentioned at one of your meetings in December, and why to go meet with Karen and Olis, and myself, Prima, Patty, Lloyd Kelly, Janetti, and Laura Kenney, our finance director, did take that opportunity. We asked a series of questions, and a lot of the information is new information, so I wanted to share with you, because it certainly is some things to think about as far as, we talk about being responsible, some things to understand. First, as far as the size of the library, I know, I believed that we were required to have the library size be the 24,000 square feet based on population for the town. So this was the first question that we asked Karen, is there some type of a formula that would require Narragansett, because of our population, that in the report from the consultant included the ORI population as well as our summer population, coming up to the size of the 24,000? And the answer, and Karen's here, and I'm sure I answered any of the questions for you tonight, was no, that there is no requirement from Olis that dictates the size of the town population to be the square footage for the library. So we asked, okay, where did that come from? It was from the board of trustees and the consultant that they had hired. They had done a needs assessment, which we've heard about tonight, that talked about what they believed the need of the town would be. So that made me start to understand a little bit more, as I've learned more at the project. A lot of the needs that we're seeing are needs that I believe are being duplicated by our community center. We have a senior center, we have a wonderful senior center director in Karen Lynn, she does fantastic jobs, we have the ability for problems over there. So in looking at this, as this progress program has moved a little bit from being a library to being more of a place to have movies, a place to have lectures, a place to have children's events, those are all great things to have, but I don't want to be able to have to duplicate efforts with current sites, doesn't seem reasonable for Narragansett. So that's number one, as far as the size. The second question I asked Karen was about any type of overages. So what we can learn tonight from Lori is very true, that once a number of RFPs is brought to Olis, Olis will take a look at it, and will be able to determine the value that we'll get back, which can range in between 30 to 50%. So they'll take a look at it at that RFP, super handy RFP to them. So I asked, I mean, being in real estate and seeing development happen all the time, what would happen if we were into a project, and we all of a sudden found something that we're unaware of, a $400,000 item, a $100,000 item? What would happen then? And the response back from Karen was, it's, Olis would not, we cannot go back to Olis and say, we just found this, we just found out that it's going to be $500,000 more, we're unaware of it, can we be reimbursed? And the answer to that was no, that the reimbursement is a one-time reimbursement from what we initially applied. So those are two things that really concerned me when we were meeting. The third thing is, our current library is about 9,000 square feet, give or take, and the town is giving funding, $840,000 a year to the library. So we spoke a little bit more about the fact that we would be doubling the size of the library, which would be doubling the size of anything that operates in a library, salaries, heating, electric, all of those things. So we asked then, well, what would happen as far as the difference between doubling the size, and certainly it's not going to double, make it 840,000, but certainly there will be a number that goes up. And the response we received back was, the town would need to guarantee that the town would pay that difference. So, you know, those three things were a little bit concerning as far as just, you know, number one, we didn't need to have as large of a library as we bought, and as far as the Olis coverage, that it's a one-time, as soon as we show it, and then also to taking a look at any type of, of any additions for operation and salaries going forward as we explore out. We also took the opportunity to meet with bonds that I've just puded, and myself, Matt, and Rick as well, with our town manager and our town finance director. And the one thing that he was stressing is that he would not issue a bond, and I know Laura and I know Matt both said that they would not sign for the bond if we did not have the money in the bank. So I am so thrilled to see that you have so many people that are willing to donate. However, it's my understanding that unless there is actually money in the bank, they did make the exception of either a Rhode Island foundation or a Chamberlain Foundation, and certainly if they were pledging grant money for those, that they would consider it, that that was fact. But any individual wouldn't actually need to be in the bank, so he wouldn't be able to issue the bond until that time. You know, I hear what you're saying as far as 67.9% voted for, I voted for the bond, I do tell everyone I voted for the bond, and I did. However, there are many people that if you ask about the bond, what did you vote for? There's a difference. There's a difference between people who think they voted for an existing site versus people who they think voted for a purchase. There's no way for us to know that. The one thing that we do know is that we bought the building, it's ours, and we have a bond for 5.8 million dollars out there, and the town right now is out the 2.8 from our funding for that. I also wanted just to put out that too, that because of the dream you have, that the needs assessment and the report that's in with our library consultant, that in my belief, the library has really morphed more into a library but a community center. And certainly, the town never voted the 5.8 million to turn over a community center to the library board of trustees. So those are some thoughts that I've had. I know that we need to have a new library, we do, we need to have a better library, but I just want to make sure that we're doing it in the most cost-effective manner and most intelligent manner, that we're not boxing out other current buildings that we have that are in disrepair, that we could be utilizing, and I just think that these are some things that we need to look at, and a lot of this information is new information that we just found out recently.
Yeah, the question was, the next, we're gonna go to the members of the board of trustees, but I want to fix that, I wanted to see if we can fix that microphone too, but what I'll do now is I'll turn it over to, is it unplugged? We'll take a break in a little bit to do that, but let me, let me see what the members of the board of trustees, if they have come forward. I will come back around, it will come back around. So we'll send this over, Ricky, can you give that to Karen, please? No, we're gonna go to the board.
Joe, I take issue with some of your comments. First of all, vice president of the seniors, and I spend a lot of time over the senior activities, it's very well utilized in that building, and the things aren't interchangeable and aren't duplicating what is over at the senior center. Plus, we have a growing number of senior population, and there is special expertise that our librarians have concerning the use of technology, and there's special factors that we're able to get things like the movies, you can't just bring them over to the senior center and show them over there. Plus, there isn't a room over there. So if the room, if it's being utilized, and it's not open on weekends during the evenings, and there's a need for all the activities that are already over there and expanding programs, so with all due respect, I find it not an accurate analysis of the availability of the rooms at the community center versus the library. And we also have an aging population that was shown by the last 10-year comprehensive plan, and we use the library for a lot of different age groups and a lot of different activities, and it's not duplicative. Thank you.
Do other members want to run away in?
We'd like to have Karen Miller speak about the program.
So Karen, why don't you come up to the microphone, Dan came to? Unless you want to sit here. Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I respect and admire what the trustees are doing, the council are doing in terms of trying to bring a new library to the residents of Narragansett, and I think it's a, it's a well-deserved term, I know the voters voted in favor of this, and I know that there's a need to improve the library services here in town. I also appreciate meeting, I've met with a number of you on different occasions, whether it's down here in the town Narragansett, town manager, finance department, and thank you Jill and Rick for coming up to see me in December. I know we covered a lot of ground in that meeting, and I just wanted to clarify a few points that we did discuss that had been brought up today. The first is about the size of the library and the requirement of the square footage, and absolutely, we do not have a requirement for how large a library in the state needs to be, we leave that as a local decision. The local decision is based on the strategic plan that the library develops in terms of reviewing the needs of the community, getting feedback from the community, and analyzing the use and the use of services and use of the building at the library. So we require that the library in the town meets the needs of the strategic plan. What I've seen in the building program, which I think you will have access to, and that Lori discussed when she did her presentation, is the fact that the meeting room can't accommodate the number of people who want to attend programs at the library. The children's room is woefully inadequate in terms of the size to serve the young people in Narragansett, which of course is one of our key missions here, is providing learning resources, and that early literacy, where kids often learn how to read, going to story times at the library. So it's looking at the whole group of services the library provides to everyone from, as we sometimes say, from birth to earth, from the young people to senior citizens, so providing services for the entire population of the town. So based on the program that the building consultant put together, that is how the library derived the square footage. And when we look at the construction application, we look to make sure that they've done due diligence, researched the town, researched the services they need to provide, to come up with a square footage for the library. So we support the number that they developed, because it's based on community need, and if we saw community need documented, yet a building that's perhaps 9,000 square feet, we would not sign on to reimburse the project like that again. The needs, as Lori said, are different in every town in the state, so we leave it to the local, the local board trustees and the local library to determine how large a library they need, and we look for the evidence that supports their cause in their application to state reimbursement. I also want to clarify on the reimbursement, in terms of once Olis signs off on reimbursement. We will help, as we've been involved since, I believe, 2009, coming down to the library meeting with the board of trustees and the consultants that have been brought in, we've met with them, we've explained the program to them, but one of the key factors in the program is, we work with the library throughout the process. It's not a competitive grant, libraries can submit an application for construction reimbursement funding at any time, and we do give priority to communities that have not received the grant in the 54 years the program has been in existence. So in terms of when we sign off on reimbursement, so there's a preliminary letter of intent, which we've received from the library board of trustees, outlining what they intend to do, and we have not received an application yet, because we suggest people submit an application when they have the cost of a building should be based on certain architectural drawings. So we will work with the library throughout the process, looking at the schematic drawings, providing feedback, but we won't sign a construction reimbursement agreement until we see the final plans for the library construction. So you have the construction drawings ready, prepared, you have that professional cost estimate available, so you have a really good idea of what the cost of the building will be. And that includes an engineer going through the building and uncovering, is there asbestos in the building, are there structural issues? So that all these elements in terms of constructing the library have been considered, and hopefully, if you have an architect, an engineer, and a cost estimator that know their profession, know their job, they will come up with a cost that is pretty close to what the cost of the building is going to be, plus contingency, and we will sign on to a contingency, which is usually around 10% of that cost. So once you have the construction plans all set, with the engineering and all the various aspects to that, once you have those improved also by the building inspector in the town, we will look at that, and there will be that cost estimate, and that is the agreement that we will enter with the, with the library board of trustees to reimburse the project. And that also includes making sure that 100% of the funding is in place. So before the state signs off on any agreement to reimburse a construction project, you will have a pretty good number in terms of how much that project's going to cost. And I agree, Joe, as you mentioned, sometimes in real estate, you don't know things until you start knocking walls down, but hopefully with the building, it's not, it's not that old building, and it's basically a box, I haven't had to walk through the building, so I'm not an engineer, I don't know what could be underneath, but I know the town probably looked at the building before they bought the building. So I just wanted to clarify that when the state signs off on a project, we want to see the money, we want to know how much it costs, so that you have a maximum reimbursement that we can determine at that point in time. So most of the projects we've done, of course, there are, there are change orders on any project that may increase the cost, but the reimbursement comes through what the state has, has committed to after we've done audit of the project. We talked about the, the cost of running the library. Now, one of the other requirements of Olis' construction reimbursement program is that the town looks at the library that they're constructing, and looks at it in terms of how we're going to staff it, how we're going to run it. Now, I've heard earlier that the existing library is not very efficient in terms of its HVAC system. When you have a new building, it will be built up to the current standards of energy, energy savings, and will be more efficient to run than your existing space. The space also, the way it is, it's basically a big box, anybody who's seen the Belmont Market, big box, that makes supervision easier, and you won't have to have additional staff necessarily to look into nooks and crannies, because everybody will be, the way the library is built, there will be sightlines incorporated into the design that allows you to make the most efficient use of staff and the most efficient use of space. So we do require that people look at what the cost of running the building will be. Of course, if it's twice as big, it will cost more to run it, but it may be just as efficiently staffed. I know with Tibbetan, when they went from a library that was, I believe, about 5,000 square feet to a 24,000 square foot building, they did not have to double their staff, they had to add additional staff, but not, not a tremendous number in comparison to what they already have. So the actual cost of running their new library were not that much more than running their old 1920's building that was on two floors with staff, because you need staff on eight floors. And in terms of duplicative services, again, when the library looks at the needs of the community, they do try to look at what the town offers, and we recommend that they look at what town offers, and what services can be complemented, what services are unique to the library. In libraries that do not have enough space, sometimes you run programs offsite, and that requires then the staff member goes offsite, or two staff members go offsite, thereby reducing the number of staff that can be working in the building. So sometimes, using other spaces in town to run library programs is really not a cost-efficient thing to do. It's, it's great to have the services that serve, again, everybody in the community in one space. As the bond council does, we also require that all money is in place beforehand, so you don't get partly through the project and realize you're running out of space, or running out of funds. So we have So we have the same requirements as the bond council. So again, I wanted to clarify a few things, and I know it's a complicated program that we offer in terms of reimbursement, and there's been a lot of discussion. I know a lot of people are very passionate about this project, and I know we all want to try and work through and prepare or construct the type of library that the town of Marigansett really deserves in this fine community. Thank you.
Enjoy it.
Karen, I know I've heard comments about why do we need to build a bigger library when all I really need is a Kindle or a notebook or some kind of electronics? And I think that the modern library is a lot different from libraries in the past 20 years. Could you give us a tiny overview of what people expect of the library now?
Well, they expect just about everything out of a library at this point in time. At the state, we work a lot with the Department of Labor and Training, we work with the Health Department. So the library is the one place where everybody has access to computers. Now, I know a lot of us are lucky enough to have a computer, two, three, or four, and have an iPad in your hand, our phones, and can connect to the internet. There is a good percentage of people in the state of Rhode Island and in the town of Marigansett, I'm sure, who don't have that access to a computer or access to an internet. And as I mentioned, working with places like the Department of Labor and Training or the Health Department, if people need to apply for unemployment, if they need to look for a job, if they need to sign up for health insurance under the Affordable Care Act, all these activities have to be intermediated by a computer and the internet. So the library serves as a place where people come and find information, as they always have, but it's moved a lot from a paper-based technology to technology. And a lot of people who don't have access to computers, of course, won't know how to use it when they go to the libraries. The libraries often offer digital literacy training. So that's some of the technology functions that libraries offer. They also offer a lot of service to small businesses or people who work at home, single proprietors. There's this trend for people, people know, human beings are social animals, and we, some of us may like to work in our houses by ourselves, but a lot of people who do work at home or basically commuting, telecommuting to work, like to come to a space like the library to do that work. So we're also seeing the library being used as that function because of connectivity with the computers there, whether they're bringing their own device, but also the socialization and the resources that are provided by the librarians. I talked earlier about literacy programs for youngsters, homework help is being provided. Libraries are often what we call maker spaces. Now, maker spaces, people think of 3D printers, they think of other technology to create digital resources or digital creation spaces. But the maker concept goes back to the knitting circle, the family sewing session, although everybody raises a bar, what people want to get together to create things, whether it's solving out community problems such as the 500-foot floodplain, what do we do in town? Or do we need to restore the dew grass, this stuff happened happening, or saving honeybees, or just problems that face the community. So these maker spaces are not only technology, they're also very traditional items, and actually knitting is something that a number of libraries are having knitting circles as well as having the technology. So it really, the library is a place for people to come together, for people to learn, for people to get the information they need to proceed with their lives. And it's frankly a nice space to go and just spend some time. You see a lot of times in libraries, I bet you'll see senior citizens coming in reading magazines and newspapers in the morning. So it's a place that everybody can come, where nothing is charged for the services, and the library is responsive to the community. So in a nutshell, that's some of the features I see in our libraries around the state right now.
Thank you. Are there any?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So as we mentioned reimbursement, reimbursement numbers go around, what do you think that this reimbursement is actually going to be? Is there a number that we can actually put on this?
I can't, that's a good question. I can't put a number on it until we see a number in terms of how much the project will cost. Recently, the construction regulations were changed, and one of the changes was that the reimbursement for square foot for renovation projects, which is what this will be, increased from $175 to $250 per square foot that the state will reimburse. So once we have a number based on some preliminary architectural drawings, then we can provide a number, a cost estimate in terms of what the town, the state will reimburse. Again, that reimbursement covers not only the actual construction cost that we signed on to, but also the interest in incurring that portion, the state's portion of the reimbursement, and any of bond costs, the council costs that complement as part of that loan. But we will look at the total construction cost in terms of what the project is, whether it's 10 million or the 7.2 million. So we just need to have a number before we can hazard what the guess would be. I would estimate, based on previous projects, that the reimbursement, as was mentioned earlier, might be somewhere around, somewhere between 40 and 43% of the project costs. There are certain limits, I mentioned the square foot limit. There's a limit in terms of how much we'll reimburse in terms of buying a building and demolition costs on the building. So there's a few caps on that, but those are all in the regulations.
And moving forward, Karen, with this, if we are going to take a building of this, we want to make sure we do everything to the building now versus later. In other words, everything qualifies now.
Correct.
So if we have a roof that needs to be reconstructed, I'm just going to use that, or redesigned or anything like that, this is the time to do it. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. You really want to look at the building and determine everything you want to do, because in our new regulations, once you have signed on to a project, you couldn't do, say, a part of the building and decide you want to convert another part of the building later on, because you have to wait for the reimbursement to be completed. And again, for people who aren't aware, it's a 20-year reimbursement which begins after the state's come back in and audited the project in terms of making sure that all processes were done with due diligence. And I'm sure working with the town and the state's involvement, you won't have a problem with that. But it's best to do everything at once, it's less expensive to do that, to do the entire building at once, and in terms of state reimbursement, include what you have in the project.
Is there anyone else? Go ahead.
This is a really big project. It involves a lot of people from the town. Could you just go over the mechanism about you at the state oversees this project?
Certainly. Just a quick overview, that the state, the Office of Library and Information Services will work with the library and library board of trustees. By state law, the library board of trustees is the governing body of the library, and they are charged with finding a suitable place for the library to have a space and conduct its services. So the construction application is signed by the board of trustees, and we work with the library. We also work with the town, because we understand this is a town library, it's part of the municipal government in their hands, so we'll also work with the town throughout the process. So once the application is submitted, we will review the application, review the drawings and plans, assuming everything, everything, I'm not going to say passes, but that we agree with everything, we work with the town if there are any issues with the drawings, saying, you know, this might work a little better, or your children, you said you need to expand your children's room, that's only 20% of the building, we're not going to fund that. So we'll work and make sure the library is meeting the requirements of the building program for the consultant that has been hired. So after that has happened, our other big criteria is making sure all the funding is available. So we need to see the funding, as Jill, you mentioned earlier about, or somebody mentioned, maybe it's Patrick, I'm sorry, about commitments from, so Champlin Foundation, the Ramallah Foundation. We will take a letter of commitment from organizations such as that, but other money needs to be covered. We need to see the funding is available for the project. Once we see the funding is available, we sign off on the plans, we will lend the vice to develop the number and enter into a construction reimbursement agreement with, again, the library board of trustees. The project is built, our representative from the state who works in the central business office will comment and do the final audit, it's on forensic audit, just to make sure that the expenditures were made as documented, and they will determine a number up to the amount that we signed off on the agreement. And then we will work with the town to repay whatever portion of the bond needs to be repaid from the state, set up the payments in accordance with the bond schedule, and if there are additional funds that were covered by the library or some other loan instrument, if it's beyond what the town's committed, we will arrange to repay that or reflect the library, so the other funding is coming up. So we will work with both groups to make sure this is completed in as timely manner as possible. So hopefully that answers your question. Thank you.
Other towns, when they've had library projects, have they had building committees? If so, how did that work? And do you like a certain number that you like to see, or does it matter to the state?
We recommend that there is a library building committee, who is a combination of people from the library and people who have experience in construction trades. We find that those combinations work best. Having a committee of five to seven people, we don't have any requirements in terms of how large or small this committee is, but what we are looking is to make sure the library vision is carried through, and as well as having people who have expertise in building, because it might be that the library board does not have all the expertise in building. It's great to have some construction experience, perhaps even some interior design experience to help with that. Your library building consultant, which we do require you to have, would be available also to provide input on that. But it's a building committee that's going to be reviewing any change orders, the final plans, and all the technical details of actually getting this library built. So where we see it work best is where there's representation from the town, the community, and the library, everybody working together to make this project the best it can possibly be. Excuse me?
They work with the board of trustees.
They work with the board of trustees, and the building committee usually reports to the board of trustees. Every town in the state is different. Whatever works for the community, we are okay with, as long as the goal of the library and the objectives of the strategic plan are met through the building, through the construction project.
Are there any comments from members of the board of trustees? Karen, I've come back, but any of the rest of you want to weigh in?
I just, I just have one.
Yeah, you.
I'm sorry. Just one quick comment on some of what Jill said about the other projects in town. Excuse me, in town. Again, to stress, Olus has a reimbursement of up to 50%. This is free money that the taxpayers of Marigansett have paid into the state system since 1965. We have never claimed our share. And that is something that the due diligence of the library board and the foresight to work on this and go through certain steps since 2008, that is what has brought this deal forward, that is why this building was purchased. So I think that if someone came to me and said, for whatever my career is, we will pay half of your mortgage if you buy a house now, I would be out there looking for a house. And that's all we're asking you to do. Thank you.
Karen.
Okay. First of all, it was some concern that there's no lost accessibility to the community center except if it's brought up as an alternative. Second of all, the state has given us a lot of waivers concerning the Americans with Disabilities Act. And as an advocate for seniors, I'm concerned that if there was a difficulty, sometimes people were in big electric wheelchairs, and if they get caught in a room, there's no way to get them out of the room except through a window, and it would cause a real difficulty. I'm concerned how much longer will the state continue to give ADA waivers? In some ways, it's a way of stalling the progress of the continuation of the library. I'm also concerned the parking for this site. The library board really spent a lot of time analyzing different sites and the reasons why we needed it, where we intend to put it. Parking is a huge issue in Marigansett, and that was one of the delightful aspects of acquiring the Belmont Building, that we would have more parking. Parking lot over at the community center, when it's in action, is already filled, and then there's the school buses and the schoolchildren and da-da-da-da right nearby. So even though the town council members, the elections come up every two years, there's sort of a steady theme that's been running through the library board of trustees, where there have been a lot of special concerns about the library. Plus, technology is growing in quantum leaps at this point, and that's one of the things that the library does very well, teaches people how to do it, helps them with the And the other really thing that's true to my heart is the community feeling that you find with the Marigansett library. There's such a community feeling between the staff and the public. It's just absolutely amazing. It makes you feel like a part of something bigger than you are, in a community, and even people that come in, we've had recent widows come in that automatically fit right into the culture of the library. We have tourists come in, we have college students come in, young children come in, grandparents bringing in their children. There's a lot of different populations that the library serves, and it serves as a hub for the community. And we're not a community that has a boys' club or girls' club or Y. We're a community that is struggling to meet all the needs of the residents and the people that visit Marigansett. And the staff's just wonderful, and we don't want to lose the staff. And I seriously mean that. It's part of the library culture. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to Jesse and to Ricky, since they're newer to this whole thing, so if you have any thoughts or comments.
Thanks, man.
Both of you, both of whom have met with other entities as well in the last couple months.
So I think most people know where standard is an issue, and I'm not going to speak too long, because I do want to make sure that we get some questions from the crowd. There's a lot of people here, and I think that you guys deserve the time to, you know, speak and ask some questions, so I'll be very quick. Just a few numbers now. So last July, so July 2018, 13,918 people went to the Marigansett library. And the high, so the one-day high was 830, so 830 people in that small library. It's one of the most heavily trafficked libraries in the state, I believe. I'm not sure exactly where it ranks. Five, six in the state?
Wow.
And so it was an average of 556 people per day in July. So it's really heavily trafficked. It's not just a place that a certain demographic is going to. It's really diverse. You have infants up to, you know, senior citizens. Everybody in town has the option to use it. It's a free option, which is really big as well. In August, it was 12,600. September, 10,700. October, 11,900. So we're talking about, you know, around 10,000 people per month using this library, a 9,000-square-foot library. Another thing I'd like to bring up is, I really do recommend other members of the council and people in the audience to go check out one of the newer libraries in the state. I did go to the Timberland library, I had a tour set up there a couple weeks ago. I met with the director there, Catherine Damiani. Patrick met me there, and so we did a tour. And it's really, you really get to see it in person and walk it, so you understand what a modern library is. And you can look at pictures, but to walk the space and be explained what each area is and what these rooms are for. The children's room there had, it's a great children's room, and then it also has a separate parent room inside the children's area. So you have a separate space within that children's space. Even things that you don't think about, like the books are in lower troughs, so instead of being up on shelves, they're at the height of the children, and they can just cruise them. and they can just cruise them, looking down at them. They're just a couple of feet off the ground. And I know that's useful, because last weekend when I was at the library, I was with James Callahan and his children. And the books fell off the shelf, and they were everywhere. So we spent about a half hour thinking those up. But that wouldn't have been the case if it was designed more intentionally. And again, without going to that space and seeing it, you don't really, you can't understand that. Another thing that was interesting, and I'll stop in a second, so there's time for other people to ask questions. But in the teen room, they actually have the ability to check out video games and play the video games in that teen room, which seems a little bit odd. And maybe you think, who wants teens to play more video games? But if they're there playing video games as opposed to being in an unsafe environment outside of the library, then that's always a good option. So I think anything to get, you know, people there to use that facility is great. And libraries really are community centers. So you could say it shouldn't be a community center, but that's what they are. That's what they have to be now in order to exist.
Historic room?
They had an historic room, so the Historic Society of Tiverton uses that space. There's so many things to see there, but you have to go do a tour in order to do it. Or even just go check it out. So thank you.
One item that I think is important. Any bond that's voted on by the voters, the council puts that out to the voters for their opinion about authorizing borrowing. And so there's authority to borrow up to $5.8 million. But then the council has to then look at and decide that what amount they're going to borrow, just as we did for the prior two bonds, the Public Safety Complex and the School Field. So Ricky has some opinions, so I was going to have to see if Ricky, I know also has met with Olus and mine council, I might have to see if you might weigh in.
So Karen's here, and this question has come to me. So being elected, I said that I would go out and get the answers. And I'd want all the cards face up. And that's what I'm going to be about, the cards face up. We're going to face everything that involves this project. So Karen, does Olus reimburse if the project was moved to another location?
What we would be signing up on is the project that is brought to our office. So by the time the project is defined and the architectural drawings are developed, there will be a site chosen. The site is up to the town people, the trustees, the council, and the people of Narragansett to determine what that site is. We're not interested in telling the town in Narragansett where to locate the library.
So it's just not one site that Olus is going to give reimbursement on?
No, it's not.
Just wanted everybody to be clarified of that, okay?
Ricky can.
So now, sitting in this seat, there's a lot to deal with. And what you have to deal with is the fact of which direction we're going to go in the town and how we're going to pay for it. Okay? Now I'm going to give you some facts of the town, because I have been for the last two weeks spending a lot of time in our town building. There are two number-one things in our town. You can put them in order however you feel. Funding the pension and repairing the roads. And with repairing the roads, there's maintenance on the roads. There are now sewer lines, water lines that have to be replaced. They're over 80 years old. So all this has to be coordinated. And there's a dollar mark to do it. The maintenance of the roads, when the first bond was taken, was recommended that we put $750,000 into that program. We put $350,000. That was six years ago. So if you want to do the math, we're $2.4 million behind the eight ball. That's one. We need to continue the roads, and we're going to be getting into Phase Two and Three. We are no longer looking at five-year projects. We need to look at 10-year, 15-year, and this project, which is a 20-year project. Another thing that we're looking at is parks and rec. Presently, if we were to bring their buildings, and this is the community center, if we were to bring their buildings up to where the standard they should be today, we'd be looking at almost $750 to $1 million bucks. Over the years, every year, there are sacrifices made. When we go to budget hearings, departments make sacrifices. This town operates on about a 2% of the year increase. Presently, we're in a $50 million budget, pushing to 60. So that means 1.2 million a year increases. We need something in a library. I am not against that. I am actually for that. I went in that library four years ago, and I wasn't pleased with what I saw as far as the condition of the building. And I'm about conditions of buildings. I have a background in it. I was hired to take care of buildings. So buildings are very important to me. Now I'm going to get to the main building, the one we're sitting in, our house. This is our home. If we were to put a project together, which is needed to put in a 10-year plan, I'm going to tell you right now, Phase One would probably be $3 to $4 million, Phase One, in this building. And if you need numbers, we'll get you the numbers. We could spend in the next 20 years up to $10 or $12 million just on this building. So with that all said, now you've come to me and asked me, let's put all this together. And I'd love to put it all together. But on the other side of the coin is, it's going to be the taxpayers. And we can only raise the taxes 4%. And what councilperson wants to go the max on a tax rate? Probably won't get elected again, I guarantee you that. So in looking at all this, the question now is, who are we going to take from? Okay? We still have education in schools. I sat with them today. If you put their program out there, again, the school system's about $30 million. It's about a 2% increase.
The state does it.
So that's your number. Multiply the two times the 30, and that's what you get for number. So who are we going to take from? Do you want to lay back on the roads? Do you want to take from the education in the school department? Do you want to take from recreation? And we need to do something with library. So what do we do? And that's the question I've been thought tonight. What do we do? I'm willing to do it, but how are we going to do it? And how are we going to make it affordable for the taxpayers? We need the best library in this town that the taxpayers can afford. But we also need to do the other projects. Because when you put that all together, as I see numbers that tell me we're losing $9,000 a month. If you want to put a $50 million number out there, which I can very easily put together with everything that needs to be done, it's a lot more than $9,000 a month these taxpayers are losing. We've been losing for years. So that's what I'm faced with, and I'm looking at this whole picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. And so everyone's kind of weighed in on their thoughts on where they are. I haven't heard a ton of anybody kind of moving toward the middle on this, but that's okay, which is the hope of the work session. But I think that, I think we do have one discrete item that we can have as an output from tonight, which would be the discussion of the liquor store, whether or not that would be part of the library use. So I want to get thoughts on that, because I think it's important if the RFP goes out to determine whether or not the liquor store, because the liquor store has a lease till about the middle of 2020. They pay $60,000 a year to the town. It was purchased with $400,000 of taxable bonds, correct? I mean, I thought of that, yes. Laura, is that correct? Yes, it is correct. Thank you. So I want to get the thoughts of everyone at the table on that, if we can come to a consensus on at least the liquor store portion of this, because so we at least have some progress from tonight. Yeah, taxable bonds, $400,000. That was October, the October vote on the taxable bond. And the reason for that is because we can't use that non-taxable bonds for the purchase of a liquor store that is, that we get money from.
Can I address Jill's?
I think we can, if we wanted to debate, we could be here till one in the morning.
Well, no, I...
I want to get a consensus, if we can, on the liquor store piece of this. I think that's important going forward. So we've heard, we heard all the different points of view. They're not the same. So there's not a lot of moving, standing kind of middle. So I think what the thought process was, there was a lot of discussion about the beer liquor store. The former council didn't make a decision about that. And, I'm sorry, not the former liquor store, the liquor store. And I want to see what the thought process is on that. And I guess I'll start on that. I think that it brings money in for us, the liquor store, so I think we probably should leave it alone at least for the next two years. That would be my thought process, since it brings $60,000 a year into the freight and cost.
So I guess I'm just confused to comment at all on the liquor store, when it sounds like Mr. Lena is saying we have other things and we can't go forward with this project. So it seems like the entire thing seems moot. I'm really confused, because yes, there's always going to be other projects in town. This is a project that we can get reimbursement for. So I'm sorry that I can't answer the liquor store, because I'm not convinced anyone here is going to go forward with an RFP to go forward with any part of this project. So the liquor store, the building, the parking, the loading dock was initially purchased for a library project. I mean, we can talk about compromises, but if you're not issuing an RFP, I don't know what we're discussing here.
Well, the RFP is on the upcoming agenda for the 20th of January.
It's been on the agenda several times since November.
And people wanted to do this research, but what happened was they kept getting put on and gobbled up a lot of part of town's time in these meetings. So people chose to put that on and where we are. But right now, I'd like to try again. Again, we can, people can debate, so...
Well, I mean, if you assure me the RFP is...
I'm not assuring you any, you don't assure me anything. So I'd like to, again, I'd like to see what the council's thoughts are on what they want, because there was this discussion of the liquor store. If you don't want to get an output on that either, then we'll all just go home, because it would be an inconclusive work session.
Excuse me. Is yours the only opinion that matters here?
You're out of order.
I couldn't care less if I'm out of order, and I still haven't met Robert. So when do we find out? When people who have a major interest in this get to discuss with the three of you who seem determined to stop this?
That's not true.
I am going to close the board's...
That's not true.
Okay. So the board's question is closed.
I am going, I have said, I've said, I've said very little tonight, actually.
I noticed that. You know, before. I noticed that. We said nothing.
We're going to have to remove you if you act like...
That's right.
All right, so...
Shall we chat after you finish?
No one should be shouting. No one should be hissing. No one should be shouting. There's a difference of opinion on this. That's what's going on in the community right now, all right? So if, you guys tell me, I'm actually going to defer to the conference on this. On the liquor store piece of this, I'd like to hear what the floor talks, so...
Matt, I can, I'll give you my thoughts on the liquor store. I do want to ask you, though, just so we can define that, I guess. Like, what is, what's coming to the middle for you? So what does that mean? Is that like financially, is that removing the liquor store from the project? I'm just trying to understand, so we're all working on the same thing.
I was working on some ideas for that, but I heard nothing from anybody on the other side of the fence. So I really doubt, like...
No, that's what I'm asking, Matt.
Well, I, I want to hear what, what is it for you?
For me, maybe... Well, it's hard to, you know, changing the amount of the bond is difficult, because it has to be a viable project. So when you go to the bond council and you say, we're only going to give like $1 million for this project and the building, then the board is not, the fundraising is not going to be able to bridge that gap, so it just can't get approved.
Wait, so if it's a all-or-nothing discussion, if there's no, great, so there was opportunity for people to come forward with things, but...
I didn't take it up here, Ricky.
I heard zero.
So like, if the liquor store was removed from the project, to make it simpler and to also have that revenue coming in?
I want to find out the future of the liquor store, that's what I want to know.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
So why don't you guys tell me what you think about that?
My thought is that that would be considered a compromise, because taking out some of the square footage, we're at 18 instead of 22. It is a revenue generator that covers the camp charges and that, or like Patrick said. It simplifies the project, so, and this was something that was not decided. So this is like the definition of compromising on this.
It's really not a compromise, because it was never the original intent. It was never the original intent. No one was ever dreaming of buying the liquor store in early part... Well, there was a shared with the former council of buying the liquor...
The former town manager had it. If you want to go back and discuss, the seller of the property, the loading dock, and the liquor store, and forever.
And you, I want to...
Maybe it applies right now, and maybe that's your compromise?
That is not, no, the liquor store was not, it was added on to everything in the process in 2016. That's my record.
Well, it was discussed as first rank refusal, because they had a lease. Even when it was in a condominium site, we discussed, we sat at a table, and we discussed when it came up, when their lease came up, if we could purchase the rest of the building, because our needs assessment left us short in not having enough space.
Laura, you know the October 17 vote didn't include the liquor store.
Yeah, I think we talked about two different things. Did we have the October 17?
The October 2017 vote did not include the liquor store, and that was added on.
Yes, but that is not to say that I didn't sit at those meetings and request that.
But that was not contemplated by the bond. That was not contemplated by the discussion.
That is true.
Thank you.
That is true.
So let's get to the facts.
That's how we're dealing with the project.
So again, I want to get, if we can get somewhere here, but if we can't, then we can. So what's the, is there a thought on that?
Well, I find myself wondering, Matt, is the liquor store going to stand out? It generates revenue, and pays the camp charges. We also get in excess of $22,000. I just want to address what Jill Wall said about future costs. I had this chart. We haven't seen this one. This one was produced a year ago, based on the numbers that everybody knows about. That $10,005, $10.5 million comes with these numbers. The cost of the $5.8 million bond interest, that's a project. The liquor store purchase and interest. Additional utility cost estimate for the new library space for the Belmont at $369. Loss of tax revenue was thrown in. Okay, this is something you have to see. Laura came in, embedded a lot of this. That's over $600,000. The camp charges for 20 years is $800,000. Now, keep in mind, if we rub out and clean up the old library and lease it out, which is very doable, I have at least five people I talked to who have great interest in leasing that space out. I got a laundry, I got two real estate offices. I got another, and two other retail spaces. I want to have interest in renting that space and one grocery store. So that $10.5, if everything's thrown in, kitchen sink and everything. Well, yeah, the liquor store does generate a low income, but with this, this is the worst-case scenario that we've came up with. So it works out to 8 cents per thousand, okay?
3 cents per person?
Yeah, for a $4,000 house for the next 20 years. It's going to cost you $30, $32, $33 a year. That's the cost, Ricky. That's the cost.
You're right, it is the cost. It is the cost, and it's on top of moving all the other projects forward.
Wait, what is the $12 million?
You guys, if it's going to generate, I'm going to close the work session.
What's the generating? I'm asking a question.
One person at a time. One person that is not.
So as I said, I'm for a library. I'm for doing something with a library. But I'm not going to not look at the rest of what we have to do in this town. We've been kicking the can down the road for years. And if you want the facts, just come to the town. And if you want to meet with our finance director, she'll give you the numbers. There's nothing hidden here. I told you, I'm going to bring you upfront facts. Need to do something with the library. That I'll tell you. Now, whether it's this project or another project, we're going to do something. But it's up to the taxpayers to say how much they want to spend and how much comes out of their pocket. Excuse me, excuse me, out of order. 67% voted for a bond to do something. It wasn't, it wasn't stated that it was the Gilbain building. No council, no council ratified that particular issue. Okay? No council did. I look for it.
It was advertised.
It was advertised, not ratified by the council.
Through that advertisement.
Well, the bond, the bond is only location specific. We can only bond out at that building. We can't say, oh, well, let's go, you know, buy something else and use that bond money.
Yeah, actually, that's not true. We can, it says purchase and renovate. I spoke to the bond attorney, it's purchase and renovate. We can purchase and, so you, you can use the, that's why the taxable bonds were used. Taxable bonds were used for the $400,000 for the peer liquor store. Those were taxable bonds, okay, that come from my discretionary borrowing. And the bond council said purchase and renovate. So we, that is not for existing site. If we did the existing site, we would have to use the discretionary, discretionary borrowing. So that's the facts of the bond situation. But we can, we could buy another site somewhere and it's because it says purchase and renovate.
So we can sell it.
So the. Whatever you want to do, Patrick. So the thing, here's the bottom line.
Jim, can you clarify, was that bond location specific in your understanding?
There's two points I have to correct. One, the, it's the intention of the town. We, the $2.8 million that would, the library, the Belmont building, you know, liquor store purchase with, the purchase of operating funds right now. We do intend, if it's not used for the library, to use a taxable bond to, to, to finance it. That's one of the options. The second thing was, in, in me speaking to the bond council, there was some confusion with Mr. Farrar of whether, if we moved locations, if we could use that existing $5.8 million bond from any other location because of the way it was advertised. That's what he answered.
Cannot. Cannot. So it's location specific.
According to Mr. Farrar, what he stated to me was.
Jim, that's a hard question. So if we, we don't have the library, the town, we should have a taxable bond to pay for that building, which would increase, so that would increase taxes and there wouldn't be a library.
I'll defer to Laura on that, but the quick answer is we have to pay for it somehow. And we had, we had a meeting today because that $2.8 million came out of operating funds, out of our fund balance, it came from somewhere. So we would need to pay for it in some fashion, but if you want to get more specific, I'll get Laura and she can explain.
So, can I say something? So let's move forward, all right? Want to move forward, let's move forward. Watch this. 2.8 of the taxpayers' checkbook. Now we're going to go and get the RFP. We select an RFP. Then we got to select an architect and then they're going to come up with a price. Who's going to pay the architect? Who? Town checkbook. Again, we're going to keep dumping into the town checkbook until we get this project completed. And until we get it all to the point where we know what it costs, can we reach and get the bond money? So it's dump into the taxpayers' checkbook. Don't anybody kid you, that's what it is. Now, in the meantime, you've got to figure out how do we run the town? That's what I'm trying to tell you. I'll sit here and run it with whatever the taxpayers want, but how are you going to run the town? There are other expenses, okay? This is not an easy component, believe me. It'd be, it's a lot easier when you run it with private industry because they have investors, they come in and you purchase. This is not an easy one. We're using taxpayer money right now, okay? It would be great if we had $2 or $3 million sitting from the donors in an account. It would, but I can understand their position.
Thank you.
More on that.
All right, is there any?
I want to clarify something. And a municipal project such as this, don't most towns, when do they reserve it? Till they get, you know, funding later on when the bond comes in? Isn't this a normal process for municipalities, where roads and schools and, I mean, is this the norm?
If your question is about the 2.4 and/or 2.8, depending on the size of the project, if there is a strong commitment to go forward with a project, then the bonds will reimburse the funds that have been taken out of reserve. If there is not a commitment for this project, then no, we would be using it out of reserve.
Now, say we needed, right now we're at 13% of the reserve, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so if we needed, say, another $1 million, would that, you know, send the town into a financial tailspin? You know, isn't that?
The 2.8 will bring us to our 10%.
Right, oh, will bring us to our 10%.
That answers your question.
No, the 2.8, the 2.8 we're already at.
If I take it out of my $9 million reserve, it brings us down to 6.2 on a $62 million budget and we're at 10%.
We're at 60%.
Not with the fund balance, not on the general fund, fund balance. The library has a fund balance, there are other funds that have fund balance, but on the general fund, it's at $9 million.
Right.
Total townwide, that doesn't include, this is an on-townwide, the general fund.
But could we, could we use more money if we had to as a placeholder to get to the bonding, to get those bonds to market, keep this project moving forward? Is that out of the question?
I don't quite understand your question.
Careful, all right, we, right now we have 2.8.
We spent 2.8.
We said we spent 2.8. Now, you have $9 million left or is?
No, 6.2 left.
6.2, okay. Now, could we throw some more money to get this project started, kick-started and they go? Like the, the architect?
That's one of the things.
Yeah, it's like, I mean, is that something that we could do as a placeholder then once the bonds go to market? You guys did hope, right?
That is correct, if there is the true commitment to go forward with the project.
Okay, so it's a chicken MBA.
Okay, before I weigh in on the liquor store question, which was the question, what Karen just said, she brought up a great, a great point about the building committee, Patrick, we asked about the building committee. And we did also ask, we spoke about the building committee, composition with Marigolus. And they do not have a requirement other than a librarian to sit on the committee. They like to see equal size on both, but there is no requirement. I think that, I know for me at least, for this project, there's been a little bit of confusion with what is wanted and what is required. So that is a requirement, Karen, correct?
Sorry, Jill, the, the question is requirement for.
So for the building committee, does Molus have a requirement for the composition of that committee?
We do not have specific requirements for the composition of the committee. We do need to see that the project is aligned with the library strategic plan and with the, the research, the library, building consultant, the program that's been developed.
Go ahead, Jill, go ahead.
What is the strategic plan? What do you consider?
Every library in the state, that applies to the state grant aid, we have two different types of grant aid. We have operating grant aid, which the town of Maragansett and every town in the state receives for operating cost of the library. And this particular program is our capital program of construction reimbursement. So, I'm sorry, what was the question? Strategic plan, yes, thank you. So for the grant aid to qualify for the operating grant aid, there are minimum standards for our public libraries. One of those standards is that every single library has a strategic plan, a three to five year plan that outlines where the library is going, what they're doing with the resources. It's something that anybody who's in business is familiar with, having a strategic plan. What are our resources? What, what do we have to expend our resources on? So we require every library to do this that is built at the local level to, again, get that community input to determine what the library does in the community. So, so we require that every library has to have enough to date strategic plan and that's what reflects how the library operates and what sort of library building they built. So does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Sorry, it's been a long game.
It's kind of like the, like, it's my sense of it, it's the needs of the community. Like we have, you know, a, a population that varies from year to year. You know, so we have children that come in, you know, like we have schoolchildren and we have tourists that come in and then college. So my sense is that we, the strategic plan has to go, we meet the needs of the community.
That's correct.
What they would like, what they would like. And we also have an older population and we have a younger population, so we need to meet the needs of both. Is that clear?
That's correct. So when, when libraries develop a strategic plan, they look at the different demographics of the town, the needs, whether it's the needs of the students, the full range, you know, the full year residents of the town. And then, yes, you do have a large community that comes here and a lot come down there against the summer. So those people, so the library can look at the plan to accommodate, how do you serve those, those residents that just come in through, through, through the summer months? Now, something was mentioned earlier in Laura's presentation about if the library doesn't meet standards. If the library doesn't meet standards, they don't receive the state grant aid. Now, one of the ways, the libraries, you mentioned the, the worst case scenario, the library closing. Now, the library is a member of, we require all public libraries to be members of Ocean State Libraries. That's a consortium that allows you to go to any library in the state and borrow books or have a library audit them for you from any library, including the academic library or any university or Bryan College or San Diego University. But that infrastructure of libraries, that, that interconnectedness allows you to have tremendous services, the services of all ground libraries available through your local community library, but at the same time, your local library needs to meet the standards that every other library in the state meets. So.
Also, the, Rick, Lena, and you mentioned how we need the needs of the town and, and you need to, you know, we have a school department, fire department, police department. Now, does the, does the library, I mean, you got lines from the state, like, if they have to meet those needs, they need to meet the library? Does that function?
I can only speak to libraries, I don't, I can't speak to my.
Basically, I thought, I was under the impression that if, that if a town is funding from the state, the police, fire and school department, they, there was, they have to also give money to a library.
There's no such requirement in terms of that. The state gives money for education, but I don't know about the police or fire.
Karen, just, I just wanted to clarify. So if, if eventually the Maragansett stops receiving the waiver, or the multiple waivers that they're getting right now for ADA and other violations, is it true that if you live in Maragansett, you would not be able to use any libraries outside of Maragansett? Is that correct? Because you wouldn't be in the system?
That, that depends on whether the library also stops being a member of Ocean State Libraries. Ocean State Libraries is a reciprocal agreement between all town, all communities in the state. So we require libraries to belong to Ocean State Libraries if you want to receive state aid. If you don't want to receive state aid, you can do whatever you want. But if they are not a member, then, then the Maragansett library card would only be good in the town of Maragansett. You would be able to go into any other community and you would not be able to use any of the resources. You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to get books delivered to you from other libraries in the state. So you would only be able to use your local library.
So are the waivers related to possibly losing that membership?
That, the Ocean State Library is, is separate from us. They are separate 501(c)(3), so they have their own, their own requirements. Generally, when that happens in Central Falls, when Central Falls went bankrupt, they cannot belong to the consortium anymore. So those residents of Central Falls could not use any other library, although the city of Kentucky very graciously allowed them to come and use the Kentucky library. But that's, that's an agreement that's met by the libraries in the state and that's not ruled by our office.
Hey Karen, so as long as that fee is paid, as long as that fee is paid, I can go to any library in the state.
By, with Ocean State Libraries, you can go to any, any library in the state if the fee to Ocean State Libraries is paid. If, if the library does not meet standards, our standards, you cannot get library books delivered to your library from any other library in the state. And there are other benefits of, of meeting the public library requirements and qualifying for the state aid. I'm not exactly sure how much money the town in Maragansett gets annually in state aid out of you by November. Hundred, hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars annually from the state of Rhode Island to cover operating costs. So that's close to 25% of the cost of operating the library at the town in Maragansett. So that is what gets lost if you do not meet the minimum standards for public libraries.
All right, yes, Karen.
I don't know if you can answer this question, but isn't it the affirmative obligation of the town, since the voters voted on the bonds to expand the library, isn't it the affirmative obligation of the town to make sure that project goes forward?
There's no way to describe it if there's an authorization to borrow up to a certain amount and then it's a decision that the council has to make with weighing all the things that are going on in the town.
What question that, was it the voters voted for?
Which they vote for every bond, yes.
And they voted two-thirds.
So.
Where is the follow for a part of the town? Don't we have the firm of obligation to continue through with that vote?
Really, obligation is to the entire taxpayers to borrow up to that amount and then make that decision made by the council. So you have questions? I think, I think we have the agenda item on for the next, for the next meeting on the 22nd. Everyone's welcome to come and weigh in at that time. I think, I think we're going to call the work session to a close and we're going to go from there. Thank you, everybody.